Are you ready? I'd like to welcome everybody to the panel select board meeting tonight, regular meeting June twenty fifth at seven P M. Our agenda is um agenda approval, number two approval minutes of six eighteen twenty, number three is warrants. Four, old business amend resolution for municipal planning grant. B, renew um N E M R C software and annual support agreement, new Mac.
Number.
Number, excuse me.
Okay.
Number five, new business, A, twenty twenty select board appointments for unfilled vacancy. Um, B, public rec- records procedure. Six, public comment will be available via Zoom, please state your name for the record and then your question or comment limit. Three minutes per speaker per issue. I just wanna say if you are joining Zoom with your landline, you can raise your hand by pressing star number nine. And from the computer, go to participants tab and then raise your hand, it's down in the right hand corner. Okay, and then we're gonna go into executive session for personnel pay raises and town agent, and then hopefully we will adjourn after that. Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Angie, I. Alright. Approval of minutes from six eighteen twenty. Everybody have a chance to read them? Any discussion? Questions? Can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion approval minutes of six eighteen two thousand twenty.
Second. No discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Angie, I. Warrants. Payroll ending on six twenty one twenty for eleven thousand six hundred and eighty two dollars and sixteen cents. Um, I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, so Bob?
Abstain. I.
Mike?
I.
You can't abstain though.
No, you have to, oh, that means we can't approve them because Ronnie's. We needed a full house to do it.
Right.
You, because my pay is in it and that if your pay is in it. And because our pay is in it, we need to abstain, which means we can't approve them.
Correct.
Oh no, cuz Ronnie's not here.
Yeah, I hope he's alright here.
Alright.
Abstain.
And I say I, so that's two, the two.
Well, it's.
So we're gonna have to.
It's two, it's two. Two, but I think we need three to pass.
Two, we need three to pass.
We need three, I didn't realize my reason, I'm sorry.
That's gonna be tabled.
Alright, so we're gonna have to table that one. Alright. Next one for um number fifty three. For um amount payable for one hundred and five thousand five hundred and six dollars and thirty eight cents. It includes a twenty twenty Ford dump truck for sixty five thousand one hundred and ninety eight dollars cash paid.
Oh, there he is.
Health insurance. Hold up, come on down Ronnie. Ronnie's coming in a little late.
Better late than never.
Alright, Ronnie's here, yay. Alright, so back to um. Amounts, amount payable number fifty three, health insurance, new pump and chemicals for wastewater treatment, calcium chloride. So that was for a hundred and five thousand five hundred and six dollars and thirty eight cents, can I intervene motion?
There we go.
A second?
I also.
Ron? Ronnie, yeah. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm the um. Dump truck, the twenty twenty dump truck for sixty five thousand dollars. Was that the specified bid amount? You know, Linda? The, the total payment was a specified bid amount? In the, in the bid specs, because I don't, I don't know, I didn't realize it was a hundred and fifty. Was there a clause in there, a delivery? Clause in that bid, um, they had a delivery date, and if it wasn't delivered by a certain date, then there would be um, or should have been. Okay. Right, but wasn't that bid awarded in?
Last year.
Like in July or something, right? So it was, it's basically been eleven months. Well, I usually, I usually in a bid spec, if you have a delivery date and if the vehicle isn't delivered by us, by that delivery date. Then there's, there's um, the vendor doesn't get their full amount of, of money, and I don't know if it was in that bid or not, so I, I.
So it's stolen.
Okay, I just, I was just curious, I just know it was eleven, like eleven months out since it was awarded, okay, alright.
Any more discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie? Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Okay, since Ronnie's here, we're gonna go back to payroll ending on six twenty one twenty for eleven thousand six hundred and eighty two dollars and sixteen cents. Can I entertain a motion, please?
A who?
A second? Any discussion? Angie, I. Bob?
Abstain.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
Abstain.
Ronnie?
I.
Eyes happy, thank you very much.
I guess for transparency and full disclosure, uh, Mike and I abstained because our select board pay.
My zoning board.
Or your zoning.
Yeah.
And my, and my select board.
Alright, moving on to old business, amend resolution for municipal planning grant. So this, we just have to amend, right? Does everybody have a chance to read it?
Did you read my note? Why are we doing it?
COVID extension.
Yeah, the COVID extension, this is filed for COVID extension, the town is paying the B C R C for their second installment this week. In order to requisition for the second installment, the resolution needs to be amended again due to the change of the chairperson.
Correct.
So, can I, you have motion?
Make a motion, amend the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. So now we just have to sign it. We all need to sign it. Do you have the original, Linda, or is this my original right here? Yeah, I have it, thank you very much, sorry. Alright, Ronnie? Alright. Renew the um, what do you say, N M R C software and? N M R C software and annual support agreement. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion we uh renew the uh N M R C software and annual support agreement?
Just so everybody knows, that costs five thousand dollars a year. It's for software and the supportive.
And that is what municipalities used to communicate with states or something we have to add.
Right, correct. Can I entertain a motion?
I, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. A second?
Yep.
Any discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. I already signed, I don't know. No, alright, so I can go down to Linda, please? Alright, new business, the twenty twenty select board appointment for the unfilled vacancy. So there was a miscommunication and a little mix up. But we have to fill the remainder of a three-year term, so there are two years left. And then we have to appoint an alternate. So.
On the D R V.
On the D R V, yes.
I make a motion to move Cindy Legg up from the um, the alternate position to the full time. The remainder of um, the twenty-two vacancy.
I'll second that.
Hey, any discussion?
Uh, I just wanna point out that the, the two alternates that we have um, are actually Bron and Harris and Cindy Legg. Um, and I think, I think there was a miscommunication or it missed, it's wrong from the website, but I think that's correct. I just wanted to point that out so people understand, so those are our two options. I think, oh, that's it.
Okay. So we have a motion and second? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. So now we need to appoint an alternate. Can I have a recommendation, please?
Scott.
I would recommend Scott Wells, if he's still interested.
A second?
A second, okay, I'll say, I'll say.
Any discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie? Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I. Okay, hopefully that clears up all the discommunication about that.
There's no, there were no other letters of interest.
Yeah, there was no other letter of interest for the position.
After, after our June eighteenth.
After our June?
April.
April eighteenth.
Well, we asked for more.
Oh, I'm sorry, the June eighteenth, we asked for more, we were more, and, but it was April, whatever it was.
Sixteen, April sixteenth was the original reading. And our, our, we asked again on June eighteenth, okay, was the date, and. And we have had zero applicants for any vacancies, correct?
That's correct. Okay, moving on to public records procedure. Rebecca, who is the town agent, could you step up, please?
I, I haven't.
Alright, does everybody have? Yes. Their papers?
Yeah, so I sent out two different items. One was, you know, on the twelfth, I think, so a week ago, and um, the other one I sent today, which is just. It's more like in the weeds stuff, so I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about what FOIA is and what it isn't. Just because I think we all need to get on the same page about it. Um, so Freedom of Information Act is a federal legislation that requires municipalities and other public entities to make their records available for inspection and reproduction. And this includes all written and reported communications and documents. So when a citizen makes a request to access public records, they're doing it under this federal Freedom of Information Act. And all records need to be made available for inspection, reproduction, but in the state of Vermont, we have state legislation that regulates us and how we're required to respond to and process requests for public records. So everyone keeps saying it's a FOIA request, it's not a FOIA request, it's a request for public records. Um, our town lawyer has corrected us many, many times on that. We are um regulated by the Vermont statute. Um, so I gave you some examples, some kind of points from the legislation. Um, and I guess I, what I, the short story, and I will, you know, obviously all these documents are available for anyone to read that I created. Um, the short story is, a public records request, we are, we have to make our records available for inspection when someone asks. What it is not, is somebody asking a very specific question and go investigate this for me and find me specifically the moment where this happened or where this was the answer, or that's not what a public records request is. So what you can say is to that person, I, I wouldn't know, you know, where that document is specifically, I'm not supposed to investigate for you. But would you like to see all the warrants from what time period? Would you like to come in? Would you like emails from who to who? What date range? Um, it is not a mandate to investigate for people or do administrative tasks for people. Um, however, if you, as the board, would like, someone makes a, a request for, to investigate a very specific thing. You can ask whoever's doing the public records collating to do that investigative work for you or for them. And any, any work over thirty minutes to create a new record, whenever you investigate to find specific things and then present to someone else, it's called creating a new record. Whenever you do that, um, you, you, you can charge at a certain level per minute over thirty minutes of work. And I think that what's happened a lot with public records requests in panel is they're a little, they're like free candy at the candy store a little bit. And um, public records absolutely need to be made completely open, public, available, all of those things. I think that I'm gonna talk about some things that I think we can do better about making them more readily available. Um, but ultimately. The, the staff working on it deserve to be um compensated for time taken away. Some of these public records requests take multiple hours to complete when someone wants an um, a voluminous amount of records. And that word voluminous is used in the statute. If, if, once someone's asking for a huge amount of records, you can respond back and say, you need to narrow this down for me, you know, and here's the fees. So, um, my suggestion is to just stick with the Vermont. We have a public records policy, it is based on the V L C T policy, it's very good. Um, I believe you all received a copy of it, it was signed in, I think, two and a half years ago. It's perfectly a great policy, I suggest keeping it. Um, I suggest instead of having fees determined by the select board, you just follow the Vermont statutory suggested fees. That just keeps it really simple and streamlined, so those are in here, um. Right, exactly, you just follow the fee schedule as laid out by the, by the state, just very, very simple. Um, I have some considerations that I really would, a couple things I'd like to do. One is that you guys need to have some considerations for how you use your town email. And I've talked about this before, but town email is public, it is a public record. And when people use their town emails willy-nilly to write anything or put a disciplinary letter in it or put somebody's medical information, because they had to call in sick or whatever it is, and you don't mark that email in some way, that communication in some way. There is a risk of that legally exempt information being released in a public records request, which we experienced last year. Okay, and so what I would like is for the board to agree to tell all of town staff, anyone utilizing a town email to if they believe that they're even, what they're about to submit might even be, there's a chance it might be legally exempt, right? That they need to start the subject line with confidential. And then say legal personnel, whatever it is they think it is. And then when, right now it's me that does it, when I pull the records and I audit them to make sure no, the first thing I'm gonna do is search the word confidential. And that will immediately flag for me anything and then I'll evaluate it, I know what is confidential and what isn't. Some of those confidential emails may not actually be confidential, may, may be public record, and I would not put a legal hold on them. But it will help us streamline and protect our records. Um, the other thing is, hmm, that competent, oh, the other thing is I would like permission to, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a search admin on the system, but I would like to be able to audit the back record of all of the emails just to double check and make sure that we've protected as many as possible, it'll take me a long time, but I could do a little bit every week, you know? And what I'd like to do in the future is audit the body of emails maybe once, twice a week. Just to get the legally exempt ones out, so when a public records request comes in, all I have to do is pull the records. Everything's protected, it doesn't, it is now not an eight to ten hour ordeal of searching through records looking for things that might possibly get us in trouble for getting, you know what I, we're releasing. So that's that, the other thing that I would like to talk to you guys about, um, what I would like to implement is I'd like to implement a logging system for all FOIA requests. And this is just for our own personal information, um, I can do it electronically or I can do it on a piece of paper in here somewhere. Um, and in that log, um, did I write it in here? Oh yeah, see, I don't have this paper that I wrote, I'm the only one without a copy. Um, so in the log of requests, I would just write the name and the email address of the re quester or the paper address that they mailed it in. Um, the specifics of the request, including the date of the request and the search parameters, the date of delivery and the method of delivery. So did they come in and look at it? Did we make copies? Did we, did I just send it in an email? And what are the fees incurred in pay? And then that way we just have a sense, we can start tracking and having a sense of how our public records are looking, um, how access is going. Um, um, you know, I really, I really want, I really personally feel very strongly that I want citizens of panel to have access to records when they want them. And have it to be easy, as, as easy as possible, so do you guys have any questions for me or?
Personally, I think it's a, a really good idea, um, uh, it really is gonna make things. One is, is the fees that we now charge for public records requests or that we're proposing to charge for public records requests are gonna come down for anybody that makes the request, if we get this, if we get all of the backlog properly identified and then have this ongoing process to keep them up to date.
The other, the, that's, it will, it will reduce staff time working on these things, a hundred percent, it will protect our records, it will better organize our records, which needs to happen. And um, I would also say that um, uh, well, I just lost my train of thought, sorry, that happens to you all the time when I'm in a meeting.
It will reduce the probability of, of releasing something that you shouldn't need, and that, that, that's very, very important.
Oh, yeah, I know what it was, um, so I was going to also suggest that you, um, you need to have a contact person um, for public records requests and you need to have that person on the website. And their contacted, their email, their contact information, so that way people don't have to write to you directly, Angie. Um, and that person does not have to be uh, the custodian of records, it's just the contact person to pull it. I'm already kind of doing that, so if you wanted to put me on the website as the contact person for public records requests with my town email on it, I'm happy to do that, you know? That's just, that was my last thought.
I want to say thank you for all your work on this.
Absolutely, tremendous help to us, thank you.
If I could boil it down to the request.
Yeah.
So the, the request very, very simply uh, is boiling down, is, is one, let the town agent go back and categorize all the old emails.
Sure, the system, make sure that the, the, the sensitive documents are protected, yes.
Right, it makes it proper. Uh, the, the second is to enact the procedure, um, well, I think we already have the procedure. Do we need to modify the procedure that we already have in order to say that, that uses the state pay structure?
No, that's in the policy already, but what I did was I created these documents as a procedural document that you might wanna just stick with the policy. So that way people who wonder why and how and.
We can add.
Right.
Add this to the policy.
Right, and I wrote like sample letters, sample responses, I probably did more than I needed to do, but you know.
Okay, so the, the second one is really the, the town agent is gonna, uh, is going to enact a law to, to log all public records requests, how much they bought, what they filled, who asked for it and what was the.
Ongoing, I'm not, I'm not gonna go back, I'm not gonna go back, unless you want me to.
Right, and then also to. And then also to make uh, and also to make uh, uh, put somebody on the website as the primary contact for, for public records. And that doesn't have to be the person doing the search.
No, it could be anyone.
It could be anyone, but somebody has to.
But I'm the one who's been doing it, you might wanna consider, if, if you're gonna continue having me do it, to have me as the contact person, just so that way you, it doesn't, it's not like another chore that Angie has to do. Forward something, it's not another thing Linda has a lot to do in the office, you know, this is something that.
Well, that, we have somebody in the public that, by doing.
Right, right.
Okay, and so that was the last one, is I, I, that was all I heard.
Yeah, I'd like to create a log, I don't think you need to vote on that, that's just a pers- that's, you could just tell me to do that, you're my boss, as my boss, you know, and um, I think the only thing that you have to decide is if you want to put me as a contact person. If you want me to attach these things to the policy.
Oh yeah, I, I don't think we need to vote on that, I think, I, I think, but I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not sure, she's.
Won't hurt.
She's an elected, she's an elected official. So technically, we're really not her boss.
Oh, that's true, well, no, but, but, but in the, but in the definition of town agent, I work at the will of the board.
Right.
Right.
A technicality, we're not your boss.
That's, well, that's the truth.
I'm gonna interrupt real quick, um, um, we just got heard from Priscilla, that she's hearing from the public. They, particularly us over here, notice the volume of my voice, need to speak a little louder.
Okay.
So I just wanna, I just wanted to point that out, you're probably the volunteer right there. I'll ask you to maybe.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was just told I talked too fast. I know that, I've been told that before.
I, I would like to make a motion that we appoint a town agent to create a log moving forward from this date for records request. Uh, that we appoint the town agent as the person with the request coming through on the website. The contact person on, on her website. And um.
Maybe let her categorize.
Let, let her categorize the emails.
And start, and can I write a document and to write a document that you guys can pass out to all town staff that just talks about how to use your email? It's, it'll be four sentences long, you know?
And add that to the.
Oh, that's a good idea too, yeah.
Alright, so I have a motion on the table, let's start it.
Second.
Any other discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie? Mike?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Angie, I.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Thanks a lot.
And I'll write that, um, thing about writing confidential on emails, I'm gonna write, uh, I'll write that up to go out this week to everyone.
Excellent.
Or next week, yeah, okay.
Alright, so now we're gonna go into public comment, will be available on Zoom. Remember, three minutes per speaker, please be respectful. Remember to raise your hands and on landline, star number nine. Priscilla, is there anybody in the waiting room? Is there anybody in the waiting room that would like to speak? Please raise your hands. Um, I'll explain again, if you're on a landline, hit star number nine. If you're on the computer, you can go to participant tab and then raise your hand.
Marshall has a nap, wants to speak.
Okay. Okay.
Um, thank you, um, first I wanted to say thank you to Bob. I'd written him some emails and I'd written emails to actually all of the select board, um.
Excuse me, Marsh, I don't mean to interrupt you, but could you talk a little louder, we can bear with you.
I, I'll get a little closer to the microphone too, is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I've written emails to many of you in the course of the last year, who am sunshiney below the nose down here. Um, and I was really looking forward to some answers and Bob has written to me a couple of times with extensive responses to my questions and I just wanted to express my appreciation, first of all, for him taking all that time. Cuz I know all of you have a lot on your plates, but it means a lot to get responses, cuz you know you're heard and you learn something. Um, second is on a different topic, um, when we had our last election, we voted to um, not do, not have audit, people do auditing our accounts every week or whatever it is, I, I can't remember the exact way to put this, but that we were going to have outside auditors. And uh, I was, I voted for that because I was under the understanding that we were going to have people going over our books during the year. And I don't suspect I'm the only one who uh, acted on that basis. And uh, I just came to understand that we are actually not going to have a public counter, accountant go over our books except for once a year. Um, I was at the select board meeting when um, the person doing the forensic audit gave his long report. And there clearly are some significant issues, and I've talked with the auditors in town too, uh, really significant issues about how our accounting is carried out. And I don't think personally that there's people trying to do bad things, but I think we need to clean house. And so I'm really concerned that we're going to wait until the annual report to do an audit and I really believe we need to have somebody doing it regularly, which is what I thought we had voted for.
Right.
Uh, uh, well, I'll, I'll take a stab at the answer, so.
Thank you.
So uh, uh, and I'm gonna speak up here because I was told that it was hard to hear, uh, can you hear me calling up, Marsh?
I can hear you great.
Okay, so uh, what the Vermont statute requires is either you do an annual audit and contract with a firm to do that or you have internal auditors. Panel has a, for. Towne has, uh, for years past has had both. But we also had years where we had nobody interested in it and nobody was doing the internal audit. So we were already in compliance with the state statute by having a, a, a contract with an external auditor. The way that auditor works is they'll come in and, uh, you're right, it's an annual audit, but when they do the annual audit, they will look at a percentage of transactions. And if they find anomalies, they will increase the, that number of transactions that they're going to look at. If they don't find anomalies, then that's, that's, uh, statistically, it, it would, it would prove that there aren't any issues. It's kind of like. If you're familiar with manufacturing, it's like a spot check. Took spot checking some of these and, and a stati- a statistically significant number of transactions so that you can make. So that they can make reasonably, uh, uh, reasonably accurate, uh, conclusions about the, about the, about the population. Or about the, the full number of transactions. And even, even, uh, our forensic audit talked about that as well.
Yes.
The forensic audit was a different audit.
Yes.
We entered into a forensic audit because we believed there was wrongdoing. That's why you do a forensic audit. What he concluded was there was no wrongdoing. So the things that he's finding are the same types of things that a annual audit would find. So I just wanted to clear that up and, uh, uh, I think, uh, hopefully if anybody. If anybody thinks I was wrong on any of that, please speak up. But I believe that was, uh, the layman's, uh, fairly accurate, uh, description of what we did.
I, I followed that and I, and what I was trying to say was, I guess, maybe didn't get clearly. That when I was listening to the forensic auditor talk, he presented quite a lot, a high number of questionable transactions. Which caused him to do a lot of work. None of them were, now, before you shake your head, none of them, none of them were. Sorry. None of them were, were saying somebody had done something bad. They weren't somebody running off with money. But they were sloppy procedures that, that were not well, well handled. And, uh, at least that's my interpretation of what I heard him saying.
Do you mind if I jump in real quick?
Okay, just one second, sir. Go ahead.
I just wanna say one, one thing real quick. Uh, he didn't find a large number of, uh, of anomalies. What he said was the process, the process that he looked at. Has a large number of transactions flowing through it and those transactions are at risk. He didn't find anomalies in those transactions. What he found was this process has some gaps in it and we have a very high number of transactions flowing through it. Uh, or, and, and, and I'm not even sure he said a high number of transactions. It was a large dollar amount flowing through that, that, of the process.
That's, that's right. And, and I wouldn't argue with what you were saying, but, but it's what it said to me. Was our town accounting system really needs some update work and talking with our past auditors. Uh, I had the same, uh, persistent response from them. So it concerns me that we're putting this all off to once a year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jamie has something to say.
Um, basically it's, we're lacking, uh, procedural control.
Right.
For, um, in his opinion, as far as for accountability.
Right.
Is where he was going with that. There was no nefarious, um, issues. And he felt that we had, we should set up a better procedural control. Process within the office for checks and better checks and balances.
So is that, Jamie, is that actually happening?
We're gonna be looking that, I'm requesting that that'll be on the next agenda.
Good.
Look at our, um, payroll and our personnel. Right, and that's, and we haven't got the final report from our forensic audit yet.
It's, it's a good, uh, this might be a good time to update the town on where we are with the forensic audit, the final report.
Right.
So, on the final report, we have not received it yet and it, and it's, uh, because of some, uh, uh. Some issues at the forensic auditors, uh, and it's personal, personal issues and other things. However, he has contacted us. And he's gonna try to get us that report at the, uh, the first part of July. So we'll get the final report. And, and that'll, that'll give everybody something written that they can go in and say, these are the transactions that need shoring up. We'll also get that from our annual audits. They'll come out and the annual audits will also give us big recommendations for how we can change our processes. And in those, and so we will implement or we will review. And discuss and decide which of the recommendations coming from the forensic auditor and from the annual auditor, what we'll implement. And, and that'll, that'll answer the question of shoring up our processes and doing.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll be looking forward to it. Thanks.
Yes, Rebecca. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
So, uh, this is a question as a, I guess I'm a private citizen at the moment. Can you compel an elected official such as a treasurer to follow accounting practices that you want them to follow? Or is that, I don't think you can compel that kind of change. You certainly can on the, the hired level. But I would just be, I would just, that's just something to think about, I think, in that, within that question. Okay.
Well, well, the other thing is, when we decided to look into all this, we're gonna have Ellen here. Because some of the stuff comes out of the report. Right, she's gonna, she's gonna be able to explain that better for us. But we're not working in accounting all the time, as Linda explains stuff to us also. Um.
But there's no remedy that you can, you cannot compel an elected official to do different accounting practices. I don't think, I just, that's just my question, that's me.
We gotta make, we have to make sure that the policies we have in. Policies we have in place are actual, that, that's where some of the procedural stuff falls in place.
Yeah.
If our, if, if we're not following what we already are stating, which we're, uh, we've adopted. Then in the law, we could be wrong. So we need to make sure that we're following what we, what we're, what we have adopted. And, uh, and once all this is finalized, we get all these reports, we hopefully can clean all this up.
Mm-hmm.
The right way, so.
Alright, thank you very much. Mike, you have anything to say?
I do. Um, you know, I think this will answer a little, a couple of things that Marsh brought up. Um. I think this board's been put into a little bit of a tough position this year. Um, because at the town meeting, um. A member of the previous board basically stood up in front of the town and promised that. There was gonna be a CPA in here every two weeks, bi-weekly, I believe is exactly what he said. And I think a lot of voters took that as gospel, so to speak. And which put us into a pretty tough position. You know, I think Jamie wants to put this onto a future agenda. Um, so I think we can address this without going into a. Old discussion out of tonight. I think it's gonna come up in the next couple of weeks without, without having to spend a lot of time on it, but I. I did wanna point that out. I think, I think we were put into a pretty tough spot. This year, number one, by getting rid of the in, internal auditors. Number two, by some. Statements that were made, um, by the, you know, by a member of the previous board.
But can I point out, I, I wasn't at the meeting, um, but I did watch it and I, I believe somebody corrected that at the meeting. And, and, but unfortunately it might have been.
Well, I did. I corrected it. But that's not the board correcting it. I corrected it. I turned around and said to Brian, Brian, you're wrong. In front of everyone.
It wasn't publicly declared.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you.
Have a good night, sir. Is there anybody else in the waiting room? Go ahead and raise your hand, please. Jim, please state your full name.
Oh, my name is Jim Kosis. I'm up in North Mason Hill Road. And I'd like to just make reference to the last meeting, um, last Thursday. Where the, um, Zoom, um, production went on until the end of the meeting. And then at that point, the, uh, Zoom was discontinued and you went into executive session. Unfortunately, it was not announced that, um, the attendance in the executive session would be. Two participants of the sheriff department and that, um, I would like to just find out. Um, during that discussion, it was addressed that the, um. Subject would be the contract for the sheriffs. But at the same time, with everything else that is going on, I'm just curious. If there was any discussion concerning the ATV ordinance. Now, in my opinion, there is the law that you can have discussions in executive session concerning contracts. But when it comes to any other discussions, that is not allowed in executive session. Now, at the end of the meeting, I did ask for an email. That said that there would, I, I requested to find out if there was any actions taken after the meeting. If there was any discussions at the, after the meeting, because we were not involved with any of the Zoom discussion at that point. We were eliminated from the discussion as a public party. Unfortunately, I received an email back that said. Read the minutes when they are posted, which I think was a very insulting type of reply from a select board member. Then upon reading the minutes, I see that there were two sheriffs that were in attendance of the meeting. So I'd like to ask you guys. Was there any discussion during the meeting concerning the ATV ordinance? And if so, what was the discussion? And if it was a discussion, if it would be included in the minutes? And then a clarification of what the discussion was after the meeting was brought back into, to a session. So that all of the participants now can at least be part of that session. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Jim, executive session was for contract negotiations. And what's discussed in executive session, we do not express publicly. And when we came out, we did do an action item and we made a motion to accept. Uh, the thirty-five dollar an hour at thirty hours.
It was forty-five dollars an hour.
Forty-five, sorry. Forty-five dollars. Yeah, the contract term, uh, for thirty hours. I, and, um. And it was in the meeting, in the min- blah, added to the minutes.
And that's it?
And the representatives from the department were for the contract. So, other than, that's all we can speak on.
Okay, and, and. No, I, I didn't finish my three minutes, I don't think, yet.
Alright, go ahead.
Well, then my next question is, based on your decision of that whatever hours at thirty hours a week. Is that enough that you feel is enough to cover this town with any situations? I'm not gonna name what the situations are, but you feel thirty hours enough is enough to cover this town in protection of. Any, um, episodes that go on. And I will yield my time to anyone that wants to talk.
Nope, sorry. You only have four seconds left, Jim. Thank you for.
But.
We have a budget to adhere to.
So, I'll, I'll take a stab at answering that one, Jim. Um. My, my opinion, my opinion is, um. Thirty, I, I think we increased, didn't we increase the hours?
I thought we increased a little bit. We talked about increasing.
Okay, okay. So, so because, because of budgetary constraints, Jim. We couldn't increase the amount of time that the sheriffs, um, were patrolling in town. We were limited, um, pretty hard on that, to be honest with you. My opinion is thirty hours enough to take care of whatever.
So you go on. Just so you go on, Mike, I just wanna say then if, on that count, comment, I'd like to make sure that the sixty-five dollars. Earmark for the town administrator not be spent in the next fiscal year if we cannot earmark the budget money for that. Thank you.
So.
No comment.
No, I'm not gonna comment. I'm gonna try to finish my answer, but that's okay. We'll let it go.
Anybody else in the waiting room? Go ahead and raise your hand, please. John, please state your full name.
Hi, it's John Bashir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, well, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to the board for all your hard work. I know you don't, uh, get that very much. Um, and I wanted to say I keep hearing, uh, you know, a lot about this. There, it's more like demands from, from people who don't want ATVs. Um, but it's, it shouldn't be a demand, um, and I think that's why they keep, uh, getting everybody so divided. Um, the board's trying to work on this ordinance and it's demands why they don't want it. Um, and why the board is wrong or why you should excuse yourselves from, from being on it. Um, I think, I think it's a wrong approach and I really believe it's just harassment on, uh, the part of. These people calling in, but with that said, um, I do appreciate all of the work that you guys are putting in on this. And I think to get this straightened out, it needs to just, uh, get to a vote and we can. Take that process from there and move forward. Um, if it gets petitioned, then it gets petitioned. Um, you know, this is, this has gone on for over a year now. There has been plenty of discussion. Um, if everybody's been listening, there is a reason or there is, uh. Ways that the board is working on to try to handle the situations. Um, it can't be done unless we try. We have to try this out and see how it goes. Um, most of the people that I've talked to have, have, uh. Said they're willing to try it and even if it's the year trial, just to see if we can make it work. Um, you know, I, I think trying something is, uh, is better than not trying. Uh, I know, understand that they wanna have their peace and they can have that at their houses. Um, their peace isn't the road. Um, they may live on that road, but it's not, they don't live in the road, so to have.
One minute, John.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
Didn't mean to cut you off, I was just letting you know.
Okay.
Minute left.
You had one minute left.
Okay, um, I had pretty much most of what I wanted to say, but again, if we can just roll forward with this here. I understand it's a process that's gonna get it laid out, but, uh. I think we've heard enough and they keep asking for more discussion, more discussion. I think we've heard enough discussion on it. It really should just go forward, get the vote done and we can move on to try to make something work out. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, John. Have a good night. Anybody else? Tiffany, state your full name, please. Hello, Tiffany? Tiffany, state your full name, please.
Hi, it's Tiffany Zvinga. How are you guys?
Thanks.
I just wanted to, um, also thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing on this ordinance. Um, and some really good points were made the other night at the, um. The work session that we're looking for something for, to do with our families, just like, uh, some people like to cycle. Other people like to ride horses. We like to ride our ATVs with our kids. I have five kids and they all really enjoy it, so. We're not the outlaws. We're just regular people that wanna have fun and be respectful of other people. And I just wanted to thank you guys. For everything you're doing and you're, you're doing your due diligence and getting all the information and. Making sure that this is a solid plan before you put it into action and you're just doing a great job and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, hon? Have a good night. Anybody else? That's it. Can I entertain the motion to go into executive session for personal pay raises in town agent, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie? Angie, aye.